Alright. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Coopville School District Board of Directors' regular meeting for Thursday, November 13th. Please rise and join me in a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a reminder, this meeting will be recorded and available on the district's YouTube channel and website. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to read our district land acknowledgement and our district equity statement, and I'll invite our student board reps to read those for us. We'll start with the land acknowledgement, and I'll invite our representative spear to do that.
Coopville schools are located on the ancestral lands of the Lower Skagit people. For thousands of years, co-sailors tribes have stewarded these lands, waterways, plants, and animals. We pay respect to the elders past, present, and emerging, where they hold the memories, traditions, and culture of their people across the nation. Coopville schools are committed to educating students, staff, and the community about this long history as we honor and acknowledge the continued presence of the Swinamesh Indian tribal community and all other indigenous peoples.
Thank you so much, and I'll invite Student Rep Sylvester to read their Coopville School District Equity Statement, please.
The Coopville School District is unequivocally committed to providing a safe, equitable, and inclusive working and learning community for all. Whether about race, religion, language, immigration status, culture, sexual orientation, gender identity, class, ability, or combination of these, all students deserve to be respected for who they are and acknowledged for the strengths they bring to our learning community.
Thank you so much. We are going to jump into item four of the agenda, which is oath of office. So this is our first meeting after the certification of the recent election. And so myself, Director Conard, and Director Sherman will be serving another four years on the school board, and we'll be doing our oath of office this evening. And so I guess we'll jump right in.
I'm gonna have us do the oath about this here.
I, Morgan White. You solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office of Coopville School District.
And discharge the duties of the office of Coopville School District.
Number 204, Director District at Large.
Number 204, Director District at Large.
According to the best of my abilities.
Alright, Director Conard.
I, Nancy Conard. You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform. And discharge the duties of the office. And the Coopville School District, number 204.
District Director 2, according to the best of my abilities.
Hi, Brian Sherman. You solemnly swear or affirm I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office of Coopville School District.
Oh shoot, I lost it. And discharge the duties of the office of Coopville School District, number 204.
Director District 3.
Director District 3. Or in best my ability.
Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
Uh, no. I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda is our annual organizational meeting. As stated in the Coopville School District Policy 1210, the Coopville School District Board of Directors is to hold an annual meeting following the Island County elections and the seating of new or returning board members. And I would like to extend my gratitude to Nancy Conard and to Brian Sherman for continuing to serve in this role for another four years and continuing to work to advance excellence and kindness within our district. Uh, the Board of Directors will have the opportunity to elect from its members a chair and a vice chair for the ensuing year. Um, the superintendent continues to act as the secretary to the Board of Directors and follow the duties outlined in law. And the position of legislative rep, which is currently being filled by Director Merwine, serves a two-year term but will not be up for election until 2026. So jumping in, um, we first start with nominations for the role of Chair President to serve during the ensuing year. So the floor is now open for nominations for that role.
To nominate Morgan White?
Thank you, I accept the nomination. Any others? Okay. The floor is closed for nominations, and our policy does specify a roll call vote. However, hearing no further nominations, um, I would declare that the nominee be elected by unanimous consent or acclamation, as written in Robert's Rules of Order. Um, and we'll now open the floor for nominations for the role of Vice President to serve during the ensuing year.
Nominate Nancy Conard for Vice President.
Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? The floor for nominations is now closed, and again, our policy specifies a roll call vote. However, hearing no further nominations, I would declare the nominee to be elected by unanimous consent. Uh, the next item on the agenda for our organizational meeting is our subcommittee, which is our purpose and terms. And I believe it was two years ago, uh, the board voted to have two subcommittees of the board, so that's a policy and a protocol subcommittee and a budget and finance subcommittee. Um, and the terms of those are listed within board docs. So the policy and protocol committee, um, has been filled by Director Ferrera and myself, and then Director Ferrera and Director Conard have filled the budget and finance committee. In the future, I would love to to put some time towards the evaluation of our subcommittees. And so I'm thinking that in next year, that in August, that I'll send out some information to the subcommittees for you to do a review of your subcommittees. Um, I didn't really formalize that process, but in thinking through, I think it would be healthy for us to just evaluate where we are. Um, and in talking further with the subcommittee members this year without a formal review process, um, I think that, that the purpose and terms for the budget and finance subcommittee would be best to be revisited, um, by the board as a whole. And so, um, I would love to table the appointment of a budget and finance subcommittee to the January meeting so that we have an opportunity to, um, discuss the purpose and terms at our next workshop. And because we don't have a workshop in December, um, I would love to, to table those purpose and terms and the appointment of that subcommittee. Any discussion around that or?
Thanks, Grace.
I think I'll, I think I'll factor in that I was thinking that in August would be an appropriate time for us to do some review, and that way we can, um, have some time to discuss before our annual organizational meeting comes up. So I'm gonna calendar that for next year. Um, but as far as our policy protocol subcommittee, um, our policy, our, our purpose and terms state that the Board Chair will remain on that committee, and Director Ferrera, um, if you would remain on that committee also. I feel like we got into a bit of a groove with the work that we're doing there, and we need to just continue that work going forward. Okay.
Accept the appointment.
Okay, great. Alright, and we'll be done with our annual organizational meeting and move into our recognitions this evening, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood to introduce.
And I'd like to bring forward, um, the E-Real group that's here in the audience, and they have a presentation for the board. Um, we have a special recognition that they're going to, um, provide and talk about tonight.
Does this work already? No?
Um, I think he needs to get you.
Just it works. Everybody can hear me? Okay.
And then I'll tell you when to go to the next slide.
Okay.
Wonderful, um, thank you. Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for having me and Ariana. We're, uh, with Eat Real. I am the Senior Program Manager at Eat Real, um, and we're so excited to be here with you all to really celebrate Coopville School District's, uh, certification when it comes to the meal program. Um, and so what this achievement really means is that kids at Coopville get access to real food. And so, next slide. Um, why am I here today? I want to take a moment to celebrate this amazing achievement, this wonderful milestone, and then also be able to kind of, um, understand how we got here and also why this work is so, so important. Next, please. So just a little bit of background for Eat Real, who might not be super familiar with who we are. We are a children's health nonprofit organization, and we were originally founded by two doctors. And what they really found is that our kids were getting sicker sooner. They also saw trends that the lifespan of our kids was shorter than the lifespan of their parents. And so with that, they were really looking for a solution, a scalable solution to the children's health crisis that we're facing across the US. And so that's really where Eat Real comes into play. Um, and we focus specifically on public schools because they are the most powerful and largest lever to be able to make a difference. And one way we do that is through our certification program. So that program is exclusively designed for school food. Um, we have ten evidence-based Eat Real standards, um, that school districts get measured by. And within those, we have thirty-four key performance indicators that are surrounding topics around nutrition, but also nutrition education, procurement, and sustainability. And so why we're here today is last year in October, we actually launched the program with Coopville. So we went on this journey, and last year we collected a bunch of data about your meal program, and were able to compare that to our standards. And turns out that Coopville actually meets quite a lot of our standards and was able to immediately certify under our green tier certification. And so with that, just wanted to take a few minutes to really kind of shine a light of why this work is so important and why the certification means so much. Number one, it's for our kids. Unfortunately, the math does speak for itself. Three in five youth will be obese by age thirty-five. Sixty-seven percent of children's calories come from ultra-processed food. And many kids rely on school meals for half or more of what they eat on a single day. And so this is one of the examples of why this work that the entire team Andreas and Laura are doing is so important. Because if we do serve real food on lunch trays, we can have a positive impact on the kids' trajectory. It also has a positive impact on the local communities, right? It can be a super powerful game changer here as well. So again, something we saw that Coopville is excelling at is really building those relationships with local partners and businesses and being able to utilize that. And that in itself creates a ripple effect. It not only provides more nourishing food to our kids, it also supports the businesses, right? And creates more of a steady income for them. So again, together being able to really create a more resilient local economy. And then the last one is also surrounding our planet. Um, I think one interesting statistic is that public schools across the US serve seven billion meals every single year. So what does that mean? We have seven billion chances to make a positive impact on our planet, right? Not just nourishing our kids, but changing the planet for the better for them. So when we do try to cut food waste and we do try to offer more plant-forward meals, uh, we're not just feeding kids, we're also securing a more livable planet for them. And so one thing we at Eat Real truly believe in that is that school cafeterias have the power to change the future. And they are actually the largest restaurant chain in the United States. They are bigger than McDonald's, Subway, and Starbucks combined. They serve more meals to more folks. And so that's really where the power lies, right? And again, being able to really understand why this matters, the work that Andreas, Laura, and the entire team do every single day. It impacts the kids in terms of the nourishing food, it impacts the communities, and it impacts the planet. So with that, I do want to just take a brief moment and really celebrate the certification piece, right? So a few things to mention is that Coopville School District is actually the first district across Washington to certify. Also, only the tenth district across the US to certify. And I think even more impressive is that you are only the fifth district ever to certify immediately. So we didn't have to go through a whole planning session. The meal program that is already in place, uh, was able to certify against our standards. And so I think that is a huge testament to the work that is being done. And I think one thing throughout this entire journey that stood out to me is that within this meal program, the kids are really at the center of everything that has been done. It's really centered around scratch cooking, sustainability, and the care and love for the kids. And so just a few highlights, there has been a hu- whole, whole report with way more details, but a few areas that we wanted to kind of point out in terms of how you all are leading the way. It's one in terms of minimal processing. So again, understanding that two-thirds of kids' calories come from ultra-processed food, and that does have had a connection to risk of obesity. And then again, the, the data tells a story, right? At Coopville, nearly eight out of the ten meals that are served on average are made from minimally processed ingredients. So that really means that the kids get freshly prepared meals. They get meals that support their health, their focus, and their growth. Another area where you're leading the way is when it comes to locally sourcing produce. Um, again, it clearly shows how thoughtful sourcing matters because it supports local farmers, it improves the health of kids, and it benefits the environment. And that is clearly being put into action here at Coopville. Over one-third of what students eat is fresh, locally and carefully chosen. And so this is just another example how the team are thinking even beyond the cafeteria to make a real impact. And then for this last one, I really want you to imagine that every student, they walk up to the cafeteria, they walk up, they get to walk up to a salad bar, they have access to fresh fruit and vegetables every single day. And that is the reality at all three of your school sites. So all three schools have salad bars, being able to give access to kids to fresh fruit and vegetables. And so again, in summary, where is the biggest impact? Why does this work matter so much? It matters for our kids. It has also shown that school nutrition can improve academical, um, situations, right? It boosts learning, um, and that is even higher impact for kids who are really dependent on these free and reduced meals. And then outside of that, it's also shown that, um, access to fresh fruit and vegetable has even a, an impact on mental health and an overall well-being of our kids. So again, I think in summary, this is why every meal that Andreas and Laura and the entire team are preparing every single day matters so much. You really have the power to have success for our kids. And so before I wrap it up, um, we do have a little message, um, from Nora, which is the CEO of Eat Real. So if we could play that, please.
Coopville, wow, Eat Real certified green, I'm so happy and so thankful for your leadership. And I put together a little letter because I'm bursting, and I just want to put into words how thankful we are for your leadership. So Coopville, huge congratulations on being the first district in Washington State to earn Eat Real Green Certification. That is seriously incredible. You worked so hard at this, and it shows. What you're doing is making real lasting change, and it makes a world of difference for your students, your community, and our planet. Laura, Andreas, Farmer Arwin, and the whole Coopville crew, you are total rock stars. You've taken school food to a whole new level, and I love that I got to experience it and see it firsthand. From your school garden where kids see their salad bar veggies growing right before their eyes, to your scratch-made pizza. Oh my goodness, that pizza! You're sourcing wheat from right down the road at EVA Road Farm and milling it at the Little Red Hen Bakery. Next level, I mean, come on! That is amazing, and it tastes incredible, and you can feel the joy in your cafeterias. Every child deserves a healthy, delicious future on a livable planet, and you're showing everyone what that really looks like. You're proving that school food can be fresh, local, and full of love. Your students see it, they taste it, they feel it, and it changes their lives. Thank you for your leadership, your innovation, and your huge hearts. And thank you for all the joy that you bring every day to your students and to your delicious real food. Congratulations again, Coopville, you are truly leading the way.
Alright, so finally, just a huge thank you, um, and a big congratulations on getting the certification. Um, we are, we at Eat Real, we're so inspired by the leadership that Andreas and Laura, um, are showing and the dedication and hard work and effort that the entire team is putting in to really serve real food to kids every single day. And so from all of us, thank you for showing what's possible and really what school food can look like and taste like. Um, so we do have the official certificate.
Thank you for sharing and presenting and taking the time to recognize, um, our food service team. We know they're amazing, so now everyone else can know that they're amazing. Um, we just appreciate your whole team and all the work that you do for our kids and your heart to serve our district, not just be about food, but however you can. And you guys, you, you do have amazing leadership, and we see that daily, so thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say as well, just in my thirty years, um, in education, I've never seen kids so excited about food, and the amount of participation in eating is incredible, so thank you.
Get some, any comment?
I think you should have that on YouTube, just this presentation.
I do. I mean, this is it. Y'all Fredo's the best. Thank you so much again. Um, next item on the agenda is our public comment. Is there any sign-ups? It's okay. Okay, alright, no public comment. Which takes us into reports and communication, and we'll start out with our learning spotlight, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood.
Alright, I'm gonna introduce Logan Ince, who is one of our, um, robotics coaches. I'm gonna call him a coach, is that okay? Okay, and he's gonna introduce what he has brought, the share to Coopville. I'm very excited about it. Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, you mean, a little bit hard to show off effectively, the large robot while I'm speaking to the mic, but I'm gonna do my best. Um, and then the other question I have is how long do I get to talk about our program and our kids?
Hmm, what do you think?
We'll cut you off after an hour.
After an hour? Okay, well, I can get started with that at least, give you guys a primer. Um, alright, probably won't take that long in actuality. Uh, so yes, very happy to be here, very excited to be in Coopville, have the opportunity to teach math and science here, and to the purpose of this particular conversation, get to coach and mentor two different levels of robotics, covering three robotics teams. So I want to start off by kind of showcasing the Lego robot from our sixth grade team. We've got two middle school level teams working at this level, sixth and seventh grade. At the start of the year, we were planning on having one, but we ended up having enough people being interested in participating that we had to expand to cover two whole teams. Otherwise, it just wasn't enough ability for the kids to interact with the robot. That's how much interest there was at the middle school level for this. This robot is very, very cool, right? It has two and a half minutes, and it has to be pre-programmed to do all of the little challenges that they have to do for the game they play every year. It's a different game every year, so they can't come pre-prepared with ideas about exactly how they're gonna do things. They have to design a solution, program a new idea for how to, uh, make the program work every single year. It's a very, very exciting program. And because of that, that, that little bit about it has to be pre-programmed, I often call this one of the harder levels of robotics, or even the hardest level of robotics. Because at the higher levels, like with this one, you get to control the robot, like with a controller, for an extended period of time. Whereas for this one, the middle schoolers, they have to just programmed it precisely, exactly what to do. The other really interesting and cool thing about this program is that it's not just about the robot. There's a couple other components that need to get covered. There's the STEM learning project, and every year there's a different theme. This year, we get to be learning about archaeology together with our kids, which is super, super exciting. But it doesn't just stop with the learning aspect, it actually dips into applications. They have to figure out a problem that actual, real-life archaeologists face and start thinking about ideas that could at least potentially go towards addressing that problem. The very best teams end up with solutions that actually can get implemented. We're hoping that we can get there eventually. This year, we're, uh- This year, we're, uh, as a new coach, I'm trying my best to get, to get the kids motivated for that. And I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to start seeing some, some minds click into what exactly this is going to look like at our upcoming event, uh, the Lego Jamboree, where we get to kind of have a practice competition with other local teams before the rubber has to meet the road at the actual event on December 14th. Both of these events are at Oak Harbor High School, by the way, in case anybody's interested in going and seeing what's up with Coopville robotics. Um, the other part is that it's interested in actually making sure that these kids grow up to be good, well-rounded, helpful people, right? There's core values for this program that go a really long way into helping bring kids out of themselves and into their community in a way that isn't just the application of their ideas, but, you know, actually caring about the people that they live and work with. It's one of the things that makes this program so special to me and why I, having started at this level, have come back years later as a mentor. I can tell you that middle school me would not have done this without having been through this program. I am a teacher today because of this program. It is a very, very impactful program. Uh, that kind of covers the gist of this really short primer. There's so much more to dig into. And if I had an actual hour as Student Rep Spear suggests, I, I'd go into it. But I want to make sure that we have enough time to activate into the high school program, since this is their first year, not just my first year coaching. So we've got a really cool program there as well. Uh, because we kind of are getting our start, we haven't had enough time to get our footing under us before the year started, we ended up deciding to go with a kit bot. And that's, that's a choice where basically we take a prefabricated set of parts and an idea and a design. And we were saying, we're going to build some skills by building this robot and then making modifications to it, rather than designing the whole thing from scratch. If we'd had an entire team that was already having, having some experience and ready to go, we might've made a different choice and we hope to make a different choice next year. But because of that situation, we ended up going with a kit bot. Still, the kids have made lots of modifications to this robot to make it the best robot they can. We've already had our first competition with this one. It goes really, really fast. There's three competitions. Uh, and we've had our first one where we got fifth out of 10 teams competing again at Oak Harbor High School. This is one of those things where fifth out of 10 might not sound superb, but let me tell you, as a first-year team going to their first competition, getting fifth out of 10 is a pretty big deal. We also had the high score of the entire event at that, uh, at that competition. And we had a match, the only, I think the only match where we played against the team that placed first at that event, we tied with them. So it's one of those things where we were punching above our weight class towards the end of the day. Once the kids kind of had a feel for how the matches played, what the cycle time was like, what was going on with that. Um, but to take another step back and to give people an idea of exactly what is expected of these kids with this robot, they get two and a half minutes where they not only have to have an autonomous period, programming their robots to do stuff automatically, they also have to program the robot to be controllable by a human and the human then has to control it and work with other robots on the same field. That's kind of the real big jump with this. You might think the big jump is going from Legos to like metal and uh, plastic and actual like electronics components. But in reality, the big jump is that they have to play nice with other people on the field. There's a lot of cooperation that has to happen there because it's a two versus two match where you get, you know, different team as your alliance partner every single time and different teams as your opposition every single time. It opens the door for a lot of strategic thinking, a lot of on-the-fly problem solving and that kind of cooperation that you just don't get if you're playing as a single robot on a single board by yourself, which is what happens with the Lego team, the middle school. Uh, at the start of the year, our high school team was a little bit on the small side. We had enough to go to competition and we had a great time. And in the wake of our success there, we've actually been kind of doing another push for membership and membership has exploded. I think Student Rep Sylvester and Board Member Ferrera would probably agree that we have seen probably a two or three times increase in attendance at these meetings. Because once we have something, once we have something that people can kind of, uh, kind of grab onto, something that is physical and in their hands, they like, they can say, oh yeah, I can see exactly what this is. It's not just an idea of a robot. It's a real robot that's going to competition that we can drive around, that we can work on, that we can play with, that we can program. People really, really like it. I've had a lot of questions in my classes, as I have it on my desk, kind of to show off, about exactly what's going on. And I'm asking kids, hey, why don't you show up for robots? And while a lot of kids say no, a lot of kids also say yes. You know, making sure that everybody knows that they have, you know, an open door to walk through for robotics and that it's something that not only would they be, you know, it's not only just okay for them to be there, but people would actually like them to come. I think that's a, a world of difference in who and how many people you can get to show up for this event. Uh, our next competition is this weekend on Sunday the 16th. That's the 16th, right? Yes, the 16th. Again, at Oak Harbor High School. So if you're interested in this one, and maybe not in Lego one for some reason, uh, you can come to Oak Harbor High School, probably in the afternoon. I, I'd recommend going there from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. That's when the later matches get played, to really see what's going on. There will be teams from all over the area, including probably a team from Canada there. They're the team that won last time. And we're going to see how well Coopville can do with round two. We're super, super excited for what this has, has to offer for the team and we're super, super excited to see where we can go from here in the future. Anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask me? I'm really great at field questions, usually.
Could you share the name of the robot?
I feel like, I feel like actually, uh, Student Rep Sylvester should share the name of the robot since it was her idea.
You know, you named it Pain and Frustration because that's kind of what it caused us. A lot of it, but yeah, it worked out in the end. It works great now, so.
It, and just to kind of clarify about why it was causing us some pain and frustration, right? It's not like the robot was actually out to get us. It's that we were trying to follow the design and there were, there kept being little tiny things that we were missing. We're like, okay, guys, we got to go back. We got to make sure that we're getting this right. And eventually we ended up with a really, really solid robot.
We reassembled it about two months. Deconstructed and reassembled, measurement was off or something like that. A lot of trial and error, but.
And, and that's the learning that's going to make us really good at designing robots next year. Because we'll be like, this was a problem. We had so many problems reading what they wanted us to do. So now we know not to do those things and we'll make all of our own mistakes and that'll be exciting to learn from as well.
Any other questions? I'd just like to comment, we really appreciate having you in the Coopville school district.
Yeah, that's very nice to hear. Thank you.
I was going to say the same. Welcome to Coopville and thank you for jumping in. Just hold on. It's just amazing. So thank you.
Not a problem. Happy to, happy to be here. Happy to do it.
Mr. Enz spends hours a week with this, uh, group, with these clubs and it really shows.
Yeah, well, the enthusiasm is contagious.
I'm glad you feel that way. I hope to see you at our event on Sunday.
Thank you so much. Our next item on reports and communication is our administrator report. And, um, tonight is a presentation on our highly capable program.
I'd like to invite Principal McQuill up and Ms. Boyne up.
That is a very tough act to follow. Well done, Mr. Enz. Okay. Um, thanks for having us. Um, I'm going to start with probably the less entertaining part of our presentation and then I will hand it over to Ms. Boyne about all things Hi-CAP at Coopville Elementary School. So in alignment with our strategic plan, our highly capable program at the elementary school really focuses on ensuring excellent instruction, promoting, um, student and staff while being and empowering our students. Thank you. A reminder of our Coopville Elementary vision. Um, we envision a thriving learning community where every student, regardless of background, identity, or ability, feel safe, valued, and empowered to reach their fullest potential. With our mission to serve all students, TTK through fifth grade, their families, and our greater Coopville community by nurturing the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally. And you will see all of that encompassed in this presentation tonight. This is just an overview of the board policy, which outlines, um, and kind of drives the direction of our presentation tonight. So most of this is in alignment with Policy 2190. And an overview of what we offer at the elementary school. So we currently have 26 students identified as highly capable. Um, two of those are in third grade, seven in fourth, and 17 in fifth grade. There's a universal screening conducted for every second and fifth grade student using the COGAT and that's facilitated by our district school psychologist, Mrs. Courtney Solars. Um, students from other grades can be assessed upon teacher or parent request. Um, and our highly capable program go, goals you will see in the next coming slides through Mrs. Boyne. Professional development for highly capable program and general education staff. We are extremely fortunate at the elementary school. Um, Ms. Boyne is currently enrolled in Whitworth University's Gifted Education Specialty Endorsement Program. So as she is creating this class and providing high-quality instruction, she's also learning the way herself and providing all of her learning directly through the classroom. It's, it's paired really nicely. Um, and, uh, you're doing great. Um, as far as a program evaluation and fiscal report, again, this is, um, just in alignment with what the board policy is requesting of us, that our program evaluation is ongoing and data collection is going to continue to occur throughout the year. As you know, this is what we've said, kind of our pilot program. It's a combo class for four or five. Currently, 100% of our students are qualified for highly capable. Um, but we're very open to exploring the possibility of continuing a hybrid class with majority highly capable, but perhaps considering serving students who may not have qualified, but fit all other criterias and are good candidates for this program. And the next up, I'll hand it over to Ms. Boyne.
We need to talk later on because I think my nerds want to be your nerds later too. Maybe super stoked for that. I mean, I got one of them over there right now, so. Uh, so the Ascend program, it's our pilot year, it's four or five split. Um, it's an acronym that we came up with last year. We were all about mountain climbing. So it's the academic and social curriculum to engage and nurture thinkers. I don't actually use the acronym to offer with my kids because I feel like, um, it gives the, it sets them apart from others. So we are just Miss Boyne's class. We're Boyneville for the most part. But Ascend is the official title for us. Um, it is primarily high, it is all Hi-CAP kids this year. I'm hoping in the future to expand it to those kids who may just not test all that well or have needs that would be, um, next in a sense better than in a generate class. Um, our kiddos, fourth and fifth graders, they still get to hang out with their crews. So they have lunch, recess, and win. They'll also have all of their field trips with their fourth and fifth grade. Keep their friends. Uh, so they don't get some, they don't miss out on a lot of the social aspects. And in the class, it's really amazing. I don't split the fourths and fifths. Or if I do, I don't call it the fourth grade group and the fifth grade group. We have the land group and the sea group because you can ascend on both of those, right? Um, so in my classroom, there's very little that splits or, you know, lets the kids know if they're fourth or fifth graders. And I've seen them all just hanging out. There's no big cool fifth graders and no little dorky fourths. They're all this kind of one big crew, which I think is really impressive. And it's one of those things with, um, highly capable kids that is kind of a characteristic. They don't really go with age. They go with, um, what they enjoy and their passions and interests. And I'm finding that there are a lot of those connections are being made in my class. Project-based learning is a big focus of mine. Uh, and we'll see a couple of slides here in a little bit. And thank you to all who showed up last Wednesday. Um, we had a project-based learning program or a thing already happened this year, which came together totally organically, was not planned at all. And I'm so proud of them. Really amazed. So, uh, project-based learning will happen often. Our next one, we are going to be publishing a newspaper in which our kids write about the history of the Pacific Northwest. So they're going to become journalists and researchers. They're going to have to find the images. And I found a website that will actually publish a real, true newspaper. It's looking to see themselves in print, which is a lot of fun as well. So it combines social studies, ELA, those research aspects. Hopefully we'll get some science nerd going on there too. Um, as far as the community, I'm hoping to pull in some journalists and photographers when we start working on this newspaper. Um, I'm also hoping to connect with our library and our museum um, and get my kids down to visit those two places and learn a little bit more out in the community rather than just being stuck in Boyneville all the time. Um, field trips will all be, we'll be having our fourth and fifth grade field trips as well as some special trips just for my kids. I've been connected with the Guinea Comenial Land Trust for years. Um, the Keystone Preserve is their newest location and my kids will sort of be the guinea pigs on some of their academic programs if they'll path out at the preserve. They don't know that yet, so I'm surprised. And let's see here, bigger than the academics with my kiddos is the social, emotional, and peace. Um, my kids have already got the academics. They all meet, work, see their grade level. Um, so while I still teach, right, a lot of things are through the lens of academics. My focus is more on growing them as whole humans, working on their executive functioning skills. Um, they don't like me too much, but I make them to a good old-fashioned planner. I'm, I'm going vintage this year with my kids, right? We got planners. We do spelling tests because homework is something that a lot of my kids have never had to do before. And I want them to get to middle and high school and be broken, right? So they're practicing it from what I understand from my family. There's tears over just a spelling worksheet. So we're getting ourselves prepped. Um, also, my kids don't really know how to study, right? As a Hi-CAP kid, they've always just kind of known. So I actually make them show me their work, which I get a lot of hatred from them for, but it's really good skills for them. I don't want them to again, get older and all of a sudden be challenged by what they're learning and not have the skills to be able to persist and figure it out. So we're working a lot of those solutions. And I like going vintage. I'm feeling very eighties. It's kind of fun. If you can go to the next one, please. So Get Batty was our first project of the year. Um, it totally was, just came together on a whim. Um, Mrs. Rush, a first grade teacher, wrote a grant to get bat box materials to build bat boxes with the first graders. Um, and she asked if my crew could help build the boxes. And I said, absolutely. And I said, we can do more. So I went back to my kids and I said, all right, we're going to be building bat boxes, but you're also going to become experts about Washington State bats. So we did some research on the different species of bats here in Washington State, watched videos, read books, had some worksheets to fill out, um, explored in a lot of different ways. And then we decided to make it into an event for the first graders. We're calling it Get Batty because it was making me a little bit batty for a while there, but it, you know, all worked out. Uh, my kids just brainstormed a whole bunch of things that they thought would be cool to teach first graders about bats. Um, and we sort of were able to group them into four different groups. We had a group that worked on, um, art to share. So they did little paper bag bat puppets. Those are down in the lower left corner there. Um, so they had to figure out how to create templates for the bat pieces and how to organize everything so that it was easy for teeny-tinis to come through and not get too overwhelmed. I had another group that decided to do, um, posters about bats and a bat diorama, which is sort of smacked out in the middle there. Um, super cool that most of it is made out of paper and cardboard. Very few pieces of plastic were brought into it. I mean, it was just great to see this little crew in the back of the classroom, just all chopping and cutting and, you know, explaining over things. Um, and then they also did some posters. What I loved was some of my quieter kids, for some reason chose to do posters, thinking they could be off the hook for speaking in front of everybody. Little did they know, they still had to present. Um, we had another group that got together and did a slideshow about bats. They were a bit dysfunctional there for a while, right? Don't put fourth and fifth graders on a shared slideshow because they will start messing around with each other's slides and, um, we had to figure that out. But they ended up doing a really great bat presentation. They, um, on the day of, got up and talked for a good chunk of time, very confidently about aspects of bats. And then lastly, I had a group that we just called Miss because we didn't know miscellaneous. We didn't know where to put their stuff. But they ended up coming up with a goodie bag of handmade bat items. I had one kiddo 3D print 60 articulated bats for the kids. Um, we had some handmade, uh, keychains. There was a coloring book that was all hand-drawn bat pictures, uh, bat stickers, bat facts. Um, the kids had to stuff them and organize everything as well. And every little first grader got a bat goodie bag at the end of the day. And from what I understand, the bats and the keychains, like they're trading the keychains. Yeah, it's a thing. It took over the, the trickets from last year. I'm sorry about that. So on the day of, we had three groups of first graders come through for 45 minutes apiece. Um, they started out with a presentation and then we split them into groups and they got to. and they got to build their puppets and learn a little bit more through the dioramas and posters. And again, beyond me, just kind of every so often having to go around and boss the kids around a little bit. They really did the heavy lifting on this entire project. They came up with a schedule, they decided how to arrange the day. The learning in this was just amazing, that the cooperation and the communication skills that these kids had to work with. You know, figuring out schedules, that organization piece that so many highly capable kids struggle with, time management. All of these pieces were coming into play during this entire project. And for the most part, it was just wholly driven by them. So, I'm hoping to continue to do more and more projects like this with my crew as the year goes on. Oh, that's oh, is this me too? Oh, sure, I can keep on talking. Just kind of summarize what all of them are. Well, yeah, let's see here, my teachers, so I do a lot of choice. One of the things that I do is, kind of goes along with UDL as well and differentiation. Often I'll have them, if we're working on a writing piece, eventually they're going to have to write. But the way they get to that writing could be through drawing something out or doodling. They can work on a computer for a little while. Sometimes I even have had kids act out. When it was first time spelling, I had somebody cheerleading their spelling words to get them in their brain. That was pretty amazing to see the video of that one. So, I really try to give kids opportunities to figure out the best way to work for themselves. Obviously, we've got our projects also in Boyneville, we do a lot of community work. I have a government that does, they kind of run the show. It's lovely when I have a sub because I'm just like, these kids do everything. You can just kind of kick back. We have an economic system in our classroom, Boyneville Bucks. So, they get paid for doing work. We have a Boyneville store that they run so that they have to learn about wants versus needs and figure out what they need to buy versus what they want to buy. And then they have to figure out they have enough money. And her parents really love this because then their kids are a little bit more savvy when it comes to things. And UDL and differentiation definitely plays into almost everything I do. I'm still learning myself, but improving all the time. And I really ask for a lot of feedback from my kiddos. And they've been helping me grow my understanding of what they need to. And then as far as rubrics, I actually go with a single point rubric these days. So, I just give here's what's expected for standards and then give them some strengths and places to grow and let them figure it out from there. Go on, sir. Let's see what else I can talk about. I think I talked about all of this already. Got all that kind of, we did a quiz on our learning styles early on in the year. We pull, we look back at it every so often. But I've got those kids who need to move. I've got the kids who need to talk to hear themselves think, right? So, I've got those other kids who are really, really quiet and need to just kind of do it now. So, learning style is a big part of how we started our year. There we go, there we go. Okay. Yeah. This is just a shameless plug, but in March, you will see our Ascend student here for the spotlight for the Courtney. Any questions?
So fun to come the other day.
Thank you.
See those kids.
My kids are really stoked to see all of us. So, thanks very much, that made them very proud.
It was awesome to, you know, to, to look at the school improvement plans. And we took, you know, bits and pieces of the new teacher evaluation with us through our walkthrough. And you actually didn't do any of the teaching during our walkthrough, but, but there was no doubt that all of the things had been taught to the kids to watch them execute the instruction that they had received and delivered. And so, and I like, I, I love watching bigs teach the smalls. It's just, it's so inspiring because it's, they, they're learning from their peers. And that's so meaningful to set positive examples and role models and stuff. It was great, thank you. Yeah.
And you showed the students the rubric, so the walkthrough tool that you guys used, the students got to see it ahead of time. So, they, they knew what, with no surprise that they knew what Ms. Boyne was going to watch for. And she was like, this is actually you guys that were going to be watching. It was great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for your passion and your passion for students. And many times people think because they're already at grade level that there's not work to do. And, and we need to be growing them as much, if not further than, than others. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
I just want to say real quick that when I was in your class or was it fourth grade? Fourth grade? You actually made me want to come to school. So, I thank you for that because I know, I know how enthusiastic you are in your teaching and it's really helpful to students.
Thank you. You were a part of our first fourth presentation. Do you remember that? Oh, no. Great. You thought I was in my, could you talk to that?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Boyne has a better memory than Lindy.
That's not brave.
Thank you so much. Uh, next item on reports and communication is our business manager report. Oh, yeah. Yes, feel free to leave if you need to.
All right, so we are going to delve into our regular monthly financial report. There's only going to be a couple of slides on that. And then what we're going to spend the majority of the time on is summarizing and looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five annual financial statement that was recently was filed or the F-196 report. So, we're going to cover enrollment trends, financial status, fund updates. But first, we want to reaffirm our core values, accountability, sense of belonging, transparency, students first and educational equity. Our district goal remains focused on graduation rates, meeting or exceeding ninety percent on time and one hundred percent extended graduation. So, transitioning now to enrollment, you'll notice this is October enrollment data. And that's because we did have an earlier board meeting this month. So, we haven't been able to get the November numbers reconciled, entered and projections updated. So, this is consistent with the same information that was presented previously, but felt it was worth restating our current actual enrollment, which this graph depicts. And it is showing that we're tracking at about eight-hundred-and-ninety-four FTE for October. And that is greatly below past year trends and our current year budget. The lines at the bottom of this graph in blue and orange depict where we project the enrollment will go throughout this twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, we are following similar seasonal patterns to previous years with expected growth through the winter season. But you, the key takeaway is that the trend lines show we're much lower than the two previous year actuals. And those are designated by the lines at the top of the graph. Yellow for twenty-three, twenty-four actuals and gray for twenty-four, twenty-five actuals. And then this year's budgeted is that green line at the top. Another note would be just that we do typically see a dip in October, but then we fought to follow that throughout the years by gradual increase through spring. So, moving on then from enrollment to the financial report. But before we delve into that, again, due to the earlier board meeting this month, we haven't, we had not yet received the October financials at the time we were preparing this. So, we weren't able to incorporate the, the, essentially the local revenues into the financials. This is similar to past years with enrollment and financials that we run into in November. So, this is consistent with what's been presented past years. So, the amounts are going to be unreconciled, mainly not showing the local cash, but state apportionment revenues. There have been recorded in the general fund. We did receive the, the financials from the county this week. So, we're, we're in the process, probably have them booked by the end of this week. But keep that in mind when we're looking at trend data.
Just a tiny little question.
Yeah.
You mentioned local monthly cash, but that, did that include levy?
Correct. That's
That's not included.
Yeah, levy, levy is not included. Levy revenues essentially, that's the biggest, is not included. Exactly. Exactly. So, this is the budget status report. Again, you can see to Allison's question, the local taxes here, if you were able to look at it, it is one-point-eight percent. And that is reflecting that the local revenues have not been recorded yet. Contrary to that, the state general purpose funding, seventeen-point-three percent, that's on track and expected for October based on budgeted enrollment. Remember again, well, first, I guess I would say that the, the key takeaway too then is the ending fund balance. Here shows at one-point-two-nine-one million roughly. It's healthy, especially considering local revenues, levy revenues for the majority of it are not booked in here yet. But the, the other important note is following up on enrollment. We will continue to receive state revenues based on budgeted enrollment through December. So, that's a large portion of it as well. But we can anticipate a decline in state revenue because our actual enrollment is much less than budgeted. Like we've shown and discussed before, about nine-hundred thousand to a million less. And that will be, we'll see that adjustment starting in January. We anticipate that.
Just curious about that one. Like, we have programs that are already, I mean, we're in October, only October, and we have a programs that are already over a hundred percent because encumbrances to be not budget well in those categories. Like, how come we're already over a hundred percent?
In certain programs.
Yeah, particularly like this one is in seventy other instructional programs.
Uh, it, I imagine there'll be different reasons depending on the, the programs. It's seventy is one.
Yeah.
Is that the one to look at?
Well, that one's at a hundred and two percent and VOCET is at ninety-seven percent. So, you don't have to answer that right now.
Yeah, I'd have to look into it a little more to find out what's going on in the different programs. It, it's going to depend, like, we know elementary schools piloting a new curriculum, for instance. You know, so that would be one of the reasons why something would be spent or encumbered more than, you know, at, at this time of the year. But I definitely can look into those.
Okay. Thanks.
That wouldn't be in VOCET or seventy?
No. All right, so that's status cash flow. So, again, looking at our cash position, it's about one-point-five-two-eight million, which is pretty strong for this point, this time of the year. You can see the comparison to prior years, the orange, red and blue lines showing our improved cash position over the years. But again, like we mentioned, critical months are coming. That would be January through March and then especially in June when cash will tighten. Uh, expenditures by month, wanted to follow up on this because we talked about it last board meeting where our expenditures were higher than usual in September and we were anticipating a downward spike. Because as mentioned previously, we're able to pay the sizable insurance bill upon receipt due to our improved cash position in September. But just to follow up because expenditures are booked fully and reconciled. We can confirm that, that downward trend that we were anticipating, did, it did happen. You can see that with the black line square, the squares, and it is a different trend than in past years. But that correlates to our improved cash, cash position of this year.
Didn't have to wait for the levy.
Right. Exactly. So, go ahead to the next slide, that's expenditures by month. This is just highlighting the fact that it is in MSOCs that we've tracked the spike to. It's not, it has, doesn't have to do with payroll or payroll benefits, the increase in expenditures. Like we mentioned, it's those piloted curriculums in elementary school, being able to pay the insurance bill in September instead of previous years, typically in October and November, you can see that payment. So, yeah, that's the main takeaway, seeing that down there trending in. Go ahead. Last, next slide is just overview of the other funds that we want to make sure we touch base on. Capital projects, a strong balance of about three-point-one-six million. But again, remember what's, what's left there, we have that about one million dollars earmarked for that Department of Defense grant, noise mitigation grant. That's our portion of the match. And then we would receive nine million dollars of federal funds. So, that's part of that three million. We also have a million in that capital projects fund, that's earmarked for future bond and levy pant, planning. And then we, the, the last million roughly would remain as contingency or earmarked for future facility improvements. And again, the note on this is local levy revenue collection for capital projects. It's not recorded yet for October. Debt service has the low balance of roughly eight-thousand dollars. We did do the last payment of non-voted debt last year. So, we'll see very little activity throughout this year in this fund. ASD has a healthy balance of about a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. Transportation vehicle fund also has some funds available for bus replacement that we're still looking at making this year, purchasing a new bus. Largely because we received state depreciation funding comes every August. All right. So, that's the monthly financial update. Like we mentioned, one of the larger financial items that occur annually is the filing of the annual financial statement or year-end report, also known as the F-196. So, we file that to the state. So, we're going to cover this, these slides to summarize the information found on that report. We're going to review also some enrollment trends, staffing, fund balances and talk about some financial health indicators. So, we're going to start with a look at enrollment over a ten-year history. The, you can see twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment was roughly at one, was at one-thousand-twenty-nine FTE. Uh, and you can see that that is continuing on a recovery from the pandemic low of about nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. So, we've seen steady growth for the past three consecutive years, roughly adding about sixty-two students since the pandemic. And then thinking ahead, we budgeted enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six conservatively at one-thousand-and-thirty-six, which was reflecting the expected stability. That being said, as you know, from our September and October actual enrollment counts, we are looking at an unanticipated decline in enrollment for this twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal school year, where we are currently projecting to be at around nine-hundred-and-thirty-five to nine-hundred-and-forty-five students, which is the lowest in the past ten-plus years. That's what you can kind of derive out of this. The other note, when we're looking at this slide, is enrollment sometimes can be compared different ways. This, these figures and graphs that you're looking at is including running start, ALE, open doors and TTK enrollment. And that is typical also when you're doing levy projections, you'll be looking at those groups of enrollment. That's there. The other thing we can take a look at is staffing over a ten-year history. You can see twenty-four, twenty-five. This, what this is showing is a hundred and one, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I don't know, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five is showing one-hundred-and-one staff FTE, which is down from a peak where we peaked at a hundred-and-twenty-three total staff in twenty-one, twenty-two. So, currently, if you look on the far right, the split for twenty-four, twenty-five was sixty-two certificated staff and thirty-nine classified staff. And this staffing graph, you can really see how we here at Google School District right-sized staffing levels after the loss of those federal pandemic SIR funds ended. So, that kind of coincides with that high staffing spike. But then when the federal funds went away, there was a necessity to, to right-size staffing. Looking at the general fund summary.
Could you, could you give us that for the current year also?
The staffing levels, so.
In the future.
Yeah, so the, the timing with these staffing levels also are based off of this S-275 reporting. So, these were the final S-275 gets submitted. The end of August or end of September is when you have the final twenty-four, twenty-five. At the end of November, we submit the preliminary S-275 numbers for twenty-five, twenty-six. So, the next time we can get comparable data for these staffing levels would be after the filing of that S-275 at the end of this month.
Okay. I would love this in the monthly reports, just something like that, however often you can.
Yeah, no, we can. Yeah, no, we can totally do that, like, yeah, next month would be primary continue.
Okay.
Preliminary.
Thanks.
Great, so, uh, general fund summaries, so just looking at the high level, uh, beginning fund balance down to the ending fund balance. We started the the year twenty four, twenty five, remember, we started the year at seven hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars. Generated over twenty million, just a little over twenty million revenues, had expenditure that told roughly twenty million. Uh, which created a positive variance of about one point two million. So that left us with an ending fund balance of one point nine million roughly, uh, which represented ten point. One eight percent of budgeted expenditures, and that did exceed the six percent minimum fund balance for policy.
Frank, can we start reporting them as an average? We've talked about that a little bit, but just our average fund balance through the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause we, it's back to the monthly financials, when we look at that, just the average twelve months rolling, whatever we've got, so we can have that.
Yeah, that should be. Which isn't that a fun balance, still we have that by month in the the bigger.
Yeah, so just a twelve, there's a twelve month rolling average of that, so we can see, cause we see it right now, it's highly variable, right? Your expense slide is all, it's kind of up and down, which is good, we'd be able to see that, but that average kind of indicates, are we growing, are we not growing, or are we staying stable?
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
The other thing about this slide that I think is important to note is our budgeted expenditures were eighteen point eight million dollars. And we 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 pretty much kept to that, what 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 created this significant increase to our fund balance was increased revenues. And so, I mean, we kept our expenditures where we planned, but we had increased revenues because of potentially more enrollment. And some other things that you'll in introduce in the slides, but we did keep to our budgeted expenditures now.
Yeah, it's a almost an artificial point.
So moving forward again, uh, with the closing of twenty four, twenty five gives us an opportunity, uh, to compare against other, uh, past ten years history of budget to actuals. So you can look over in orange, I believe is the budget and blue is the actuals, uh, fund balance where the district has been at. So. Uh, you can see the lately, the the trend has been that we exceeded our budgeted. Uh, but like you were kind of saying, of what we budgeted for a ending fund balance, we've exceeded that with our actual filings the past couple of years. But you can see that's that's been varying too, again, you know, the but but one of the, I guess, key points that I wanted to pull out with the twenty four, twenty five is this is one of our strongest financial positions we've ended at since the pandemic. Again, there's a large spike in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, uh, but that's gonna be due to those COVID S R funds. So that kind of makes looking back a little more challenging too, but, uh, again, we have a stronger financial position since the pandemic. I I think the positive variance from what I could see demonstrated conservative budgeting, strong fiscal management and right sizing staffing to align more closely to the state prototypical funding model. And again, even though historical context shows that we've exceeded budget projections projections in recent years, I think we may have some challenges right now with that unanticipated decline in enrollment, so this year will be a. Tough to to make this trend, to maintain this trend. Uh, but we are actively monitoring that impact and shortfall and discussing various options in order to mitigate, you know, the impact of that budgeted shortfall. So that's your budget to actual comparison over ten years, go ahead. So what we did then is, uh, looked at revenue, uh, two year comparison, just the total revenue. Uh, we can see it increased by over a million from the prior year, that twenty point one million in revenue. Uh, again, state apportionment, as Morgan kind of referenced, you know, increased enrollment was one of the biggest drivers and also special education funding. Uh, that drove most of the increase, because you, uh, what you also can see on this is that federal funding decreased by three hundred and sixty five thousand. Uh, that's largely due to the pandemic programs ceasing and other federal programs being discontinued or not funded at the same levels in the past. Um, and go ahead and click. This is what we're talking about too, a large portion of this were a lot of one time revenues that we received that were unanticipated, things such as safety net. Uh, lap high poverty funding, um, there's some other ones noted on there too that came up last year. Uh, that were unanticipated and also those revenues totaling about five hundred and ninety three thousand. We cannot continue, uh, to expect to receive those this year or going forward. So this slide, uh, initially shows, uh, it's the same as the previous slide, but go ahead, Will, and click it. And you'll notice what we did is we took away those one time revenues. Uh, so this now, what you're looking at on the screen after we'll click it is what our fund balance would have been without those one time res revenues. Our fund balance would have instead been about one point three million, uh, we still would have represented. Approximately seven point oh three percent budgeted expenditures still above the board policy six percent. But you can see that this is much less than the ten point one eight percent fund balance. And we'll talk a little bit more about these fund balances present, uh, percentages in a couple more slides. Um, but again, this this really again is highlighting the importance of upcoming levy planning for long term sustainability. Shows our structural position remains healthy, but we do have to require continued attention to to our finances.
One, the other thing is so critical to have a fund balance, we're entering into a year where we're operating with. Enrollment that's less than our budget and without that fund balance, that would be really hard to sustain, and so it's critical to have that. That money that can weather some storms that we don't know, I mean, budgeting is hitting a moving target, so. That's why it is so important to have a fund balance and we haven't, you can see that that bar graph is seven percent, we haven't been at it for a long time. We haven't had the money at the end of the year where we should have, and it's created a lot of strain when the year. You know, when it's on, when we're in uncertain situations, so.
Oh, great points. So this slide is looking at our expenditures by object. Uh, I think we have a slide like this that we do on the monthly, but this is, uh, expenditures by object for the reported expenditures on the F one ninety six. And it came out that salaries and benefits comprised eighty four percent of total expenditures. That is pretty typical for a vast majority of school districts. Uh, certificated salaries you'll see at eight point four million, that represents the largest expense category. Purchased services, where it's listed there at ten percent, remember that includes utilities, professional services. Uh, and purchased service contracts as well. So this is where we're gonna talk a little bit more about fund balance and 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 how we can really analyze, I'm gonna attempt to. Uh, construct this a little more, so. Even though we reported that ten point one eight percent initial fund balance, there's also. Uh, a thing of restricted and non-spendable fund balance versus unassigned and unrestricted fund balance. So that's what we're attempting to do here, we're gonna dissect this further, uh, you'll notice our unassigned fund balance totals one. Million six hundred and eighty one thousand, five hundred and twenty two dollars or eight point nine four percent of budgeted expenditures. Um, one other thing that's interesting to note here too is you'll see this G L eight ninety one, which we may use of. But you won't see this in the F one ninety six, that G L eight ninety one, I think we mentioned it, we mentioned it, uh, before with budgeting and budget to that G L. You will see that G L on the budget status reports and on the monthly financial reports that we're reporting, we use that to, um. It's essentially the minimum fund balance policy, so we put one million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars there to designate that six, that is six percent of budgeted expenditures. So that's why you see that that figure there.
That's gonna be a business office decision going forward that we're just gonna hit that six percent floor and leave it in there.
Correct, it it just makes it a little more visible on the financial statements of, okay, you know, what's, uh. If we're gonna dip into that G L, because it's it's essentially earmarked there, it's still unassigned, but it just spells it out a little more.
Cause there's also a general ledger out there somewhere for for restricted for five dollars, isn't there?
Mm hmm, mm hmm. So that was something that just wanted to kind of note, but typically those two G Ls, eight ninety and eight ninety one, add them together, that's our unassigned unrestricted fund balance. Just kind of designated it a little further with that eight ninety one G L. Then the, on the other side of things, you know, that fund balance, a large or, uh, two hundred and thirty two thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars. Are restricted and non-spendable, so those are your G L eight twenty three and eight forty. You know, so really. For lack of a better expression, they they don't count, you know, in in a sense, uh, for budgeting purposes, especially you're gonna wanna budget off of our, uh. Unassigned, non-restricted balances, and that's what it's doing, it's spelling out down below those percentages. One of the more recent things I added in there too, that Shannon and I attended is, um. Due to the financial health of districts across the state and and ongoing and future forcing issues, various agencies are coming out with financial health indicators. Uh, different health indicator tools, one of the ones that, uh, we recently learned that E S D has is they actually have a target for second class districts at ten percent. They say, uh, non-restricted fund balance percent of expenditures for second class districts should be ten percent. And you'll see, that's essentially what this does, if we look at that, our, uh, unassigned or non-restricted is eight point nine four percent. So decent, but you it it's another indicator that shows there's still more work that we could do to be even more financially healthy, if you will.
I think it's a really important reality check, you don't get excited about seeing one point nine, that isn't how much, I mean, that's how much is there, but it's not un-unencumbered, un-unrestricted. And this is much more realistic.
Correct, that's exactly the point that this slide was trying to, uh, depict.
So find your your F one nine six. Fund balance is always gonna be lower than your. Or.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're non-restricted.
Correct.
Yeah, then you're non-restricted by that. So when we say we want a six percent fund, we've always talked about the F one nine six, so.
Correct.
What is it gonna have to be to have ten percent? Of the nine percent.
Uh, it's somewhat, uh, it's hard to say, because. Yeah, there's always some restricted funds, but they're always gonna change, like T T K was one thing too, that that, uh, was new, we have some T T K revenues, I don't know that we, depending on status of that program, where we're going with that. Um, but what's pretty steady is inventory and prepaid expenditures, you always have restricted funds there. Um, that probably wouldn't fluctuate as wildly, but depending on what comes up, you'd have other restricted funds.
Yeah. And that's pretty close to what the E S D is coming out with in the report to say whether we're healthy or not is ten percent, so they're saying.
We're not quite healthy.
We're not right healthy yet, there's still listiness as an unhealthy district.
Do they have, I actually never recorded that a little bit in detail, but do they have a, they show all the districts, like how many, how many small districts or sizes are actually at eleven percent?
That's a good question.
The majority or or like.
That'd be a great question, I, with our E S D, they only do the districts that are in our E S D, I would like to see something that was more, um. Similar, you know, our second class districts versus first class districts.
That'd be great to get our E S D information just to see how we have.
They're they're gonna, um, have it finalized in either December or January for us, they have it in draft form because they did not have all the F one nine six. Um, information from every district yet, so. That's their goal.
And I'm sure as the year goes on, the the, not just the E S D, but there's, I've noticed state auditor's office, S A O, O S P I. Uh, E S D one eighty nine, uh, there's other collaborative groups too, like W A S B O, that really are putting together these financial indicators and health indicator tools, there there's more out there. Different measurements, I'm sure we'll be looking at and.
Standard for that on Brad Street, I mean, when we get going on our bonds and our levy stuff, they'll tell us how we compare to other people.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question about the monthly reports then, and wait, and the way that you have these, um, ledgers on here, eight ninety and eight ninety one? Like you're showing in our, for this month, the ones that you have in board docs, like that, there's an unassigned minimum fund balance policy with that one point one million. And then you're showing the unassigned fund balance as a negative, you're drawing out of that?
No, the, uh, the negative is a credit, so if it's an equity account. Credit is actually, uh, if you're looking at the budget status report, the negative should be for an equity account essentially. An increase.
Okay, that that doesn't make sense to me, so you'll have to explain that to me more, so sometime. Well, I just wanna understand, because you haven't really used these things before, I just, I just don't understand the monthly status reports, the ones that we're getting. Um, the budget status reports and then down at, yeah, down at the bottom, so I just wanna understand that stuff, so I can talk to you about it, because it doesn't make sense to me how it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take it.
Okay.
We'll take it. Um, but that's, that's the fund balance, uh, that was the end of the general fund analysis, there are other funds that, uh, we do file with the F one ninety six, so I thought we'd go through these. Each of the funds here and talk about where we ended up for twenty four, twenty five, the capital projects fund. Here we are looking at an ending fund balance previously mentioned, about three point two seven million. Um, talked about a little earlier, already talked about this, I think the one million of that three million being earmarked for future bond levy planning and preparation, study and surveys, that sort of thing. The another one million earmarked as the required matching fund amount for the Department of Defense Noise Mitigation Grant, and we will receive nine million in federal funds. But you also see here, we listed some of the, uh, key projects that were completed in twenty four, twenty five. That resulted in facility improvements, including safety and security upgrades. Again, revenue from capital projects levy, the past capital project levy and the technology levy totaled about one point eight six million. Some of the major accomplishments that we did in twenty four, twenty five with softball field, pack seating, parking lots, um, some extensive painting projects. So that's the capital projects fund. Go ahead, the next one. The debt service fund.
Courts.
Oh, yeah, tennis courts, that's a good one too, if you mention as a. Debt service fund, we talked about a little bit already, but twenty four, twenty five, actually you'll see, uh, the last activity. Uh, of fifty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety three in revenues, which covered that fifty four thousand, four hundred and eighty nine thousand dollar debt payment, that was the final payment of non-voted debt. Uh, and so that, that's where we got left over with that seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollar ending fund balance.
That was actually good.
I believe that was, uh, non-voted, it was non-voted debt was the remaining, yeah, with the the voted debt was already paid off prior, so it was, that was the final non-voted debt payment, correct? Uh, A S B, uh, high level look at the A S B fund, again, uh, mentioning the expenditures, now these are the student funds, student controlled, uh. Funds, the revenue mainly comes from clubs, activities and fundraisers, and the expenditures really, uh, the acronym that often gets used is C A R S. Uh, which is cultural, athletic, recreational and social, so that's what your expenditures can be used for out of this fund. Um, and you can see the fund balance. For this at a high level, but go ahead and click to the next side, I think it's ever been looked at here before, but what we did is we summarized it by the fund balance by spool. So you can actually see with twenty three, twenty four. So you can actually see with twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, the different A S B accounts at the different sites. Compared to the twenty-four, twenty-five uh, balances at the different sites as well. The high school is the, is the strongest. You'll see there at one hundred and six thousand. Uh, we did have some additions there, I believe, like Leo's Club, whatnot, so that's some of the increases there. Uh, middle school is about fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty. And the elementary school is the smallest, twenty-nine thousand roughly, but that shows appropriate for the age levels. Yeah. E S D. Last but not least is Transportation Vehicle Fund. Uh, we did get state depreciation funding, as I mentioned previously, in August of every year. Uh, that was one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six, and that nearly covered the bus replacement cost. But we had an ending balance then of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. So then we can start looking to purchase another big yellow bus. Um, basically, that's how the Transportation Vehicle Fund works. Uh, we replace the aging buses based on the state depreciation schedule. So yeah, oh, one more slide. Go ahead. I guess just if there's any questions, and also there's some links on here. What I'm aiming to do is update, if you follow those links, I believe they're active links too, or if you go out to the website, sort of restructured the financial. Uh, page or section there, so that we can put the F one ninety-six information up there, some other links to some bond levy videos. And the idea is to kind of build off of that and have more financial information on the website too.
To come.
Yeah, to come, or you guys gotta interject it. I'll save some notes too, and uh, see if we incorporate some of those things you mentioned into the monthly. Reporting out going forward, yeah.
Yes, and I still need help understanding some of these uh, ledger funds, so that would be great, I think. Thank you for your report. Next item on reports are superintendent report. There's been a lot going on. Um, today, um, I received word from um, uh, the D O D. And so we're back on with uh, meeting and our Department of Defense grant of nine million. Um, so we are looking at in the next few weeks, meeting with um, uh, the naval base to get our NIPA report. Um, uh, figured out and then um, begin our process. Um, the on-boarding's in early December. We're meeting with her tomorrow via um, computer, uh, virtual. And to figure out how we adjust our timelines and all of that because of the government shutdown, but we're back on board. Um, we're excited to get that started and rolling again, so um, that will be um, something that will go pretty quickly because our timeline um, starts. Three months ago, so, and so we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at that, um, starting up and seeing how we have to adjust. Um, as far as our levy, and just a reminder that we have an upcoming special election. And that will be February tenth of, of two thousand and twenty-six, and there'll be two pieces on that. Um, one uh, is the E P N O levy, and the other one is the technology levy. Both of those were running for four years. And so I will be working with different organizations to go around and ensure that they have the facts behind those levies. And um, I have my first presentation at the Lions Club next week, um, on Wednesday. Um, go ahead and click on that. We. Worked and at all of our schools. Um, on Monday, we had some outstanding um, presentations from our. A S B um, groups at the middle and high school, and then also um, uh, Veterans Day Assembly. At our elementary. When you look at the center, I know there's a lot of pictures on the slide, but at the center is our elementary school filled. Um, with Veterans Day Assembly. Um, and if you recall, we hadn't had the assemblies for quite a few years there. And just seeing um, the room filled with people and filled with our veterans and um, using our stage for the first time. Um, Principal McColl um, use, use some dividers to kind of, um. I, I'm gonna say make it presentable, make it look like, you know, it's, it's an actual stage again, and people were up on the steps. And presenting was just a neat way to display and honor our veterans. And so I, I appreciate her work on that and her um, work with the Veterans Day. The other piece is just the, the boards that, that now line our elementary school fences. And then along our high school and middle school from last year, it's just a great display of how we and Coopville are honoring our veterans. Um, year after year. Um, I would say probably the most significant thing that I um, noticed was just. Um, the amount of people stopping and observing and getting out of their cars, taking, sorry, pictures. And, you know, celebrating um, why we take this day off and why it's important. But also, just walking in and I'm gonna go ahead and have you select the next one. And seeing um, our first spot, Student Spotlight Night, um, prior to going there, I got to see. And walk in um, at the elementary lunch and see the amount of, um, I'm gonna call them celebration posters, but they are actually, they're. Signs of support. Um, I was shocked. Um, I thought it was going to like have a small picture and then say who they're supporting. But no, it's this big poster of just a, a picture. And that sign of support, kids are going around and looking, and it might be their dog up there. It may be um, their aunt, their grandma, their uncle. Um, the signs of support line the walls of the elementary, and when you walk into um, the gym, they now line the walls of our gym museum. And it's just a really neat way to display that. And so I think um, that elementary for that fundraiser, I think it was thirty thousand. They nearly, um, almost thirty thousand. Um, so when we walked in for Student Spotlight. Uh, it was standing room only, um, in the gym, of parents coming to hear about the, the mission, vision. And goals of the elementary. And Principal McColl took about thirty minutes and, and went through everything. And there was not one person who left that room. They were all really interested in what she had to say. And um, like I said, um, we didn't have enough chairs. And so that's something I think down the line, we need more chairs at the elementary. So people can sit and, and enjoy presentations. Um, followed by an open house where, where kids got to show off the work that they've been working towards since the beginning of the year. When I walked in on our first day with teachers, Principal McColl was saying, put this date on your calendar. Your kids are going to be having this Spotlight Night. It needs to be, you know, something that we're showcasing um, in each classroom. And that's exactly what it was. I went around in every single classroom. There was not one classroom. Um, that wasn't full of families and people um, attending and celebrating, and it was all student-led. And so when we talk about student-like conferences, really truly, um, Student Spotlight Night was a, a great display of. Students presenting what they're doing and the great things they're doing in the school. So, um, it was really well done. And I think, I, I don't know anyone that went away upset or sad because it was just a great celebration. Um, followed by. Our, our, end of our season for sports and, um, you know, we got a great kickoff for. Um, cross-country going and celebrating to go to um, state. And um, they did a really nice job and represented Coopville very well, and I think George is still wearing the shirt. Yes, um, but very proud of this group, very proud of how we in Coopville celebrate our kids as they go to state. And everybody comes out from the, from the school and um, cheers them on as they get on the bus and, and head off. So, thank you for that. Um, and then I'm going to present a little piece of data to our board. Um, this is just a, a glimpse of the data that we have coming in um, for this year. And so um, this ties to the goals that um, we set um, together. And really nest really well with your goals as a board, um, around using data to drive. And ensure that we are um, graduating our students on time, and we want that hundred percent graduation rate. We have to use data. And so um, I put a little bit on this slide about why do we use iReady? What it is not, and then what does the data tell us? And so, um, for iReady, and the reason why we have iReady in the district. Is it is a, our universal screener for all students. The state wants two universal screeners. One is ESPA data for grades three through ten or nine, depending on what, what grade. And then the other one is, is a, a universal screener. Um, prior to me coming on, um, this was a screener that the district used. Um, it wasn't necessarily universal, but we have made it universal this year. All students are taking that. Um, it's a diagnostic tool, really to identify learning needs. The ESPA is not gonna give us learning needs and what students need to do, or, or how, um, or what we need to do to, to help better support them. This gives teachers um, real information on how they can support students at every level. Um, it also is a roadmap showing where students are now in this point of time. So when they take that assessment, where are they right now? Versus where are they gonna be in the spring? Um, it's also a guide for um, targeted grade level instruction. So it's gonna compare students to where they should be um, at grade level at the time. Um, what it doesn't do is. Tell them necessarily, um, where they should be, you know, three years from now. It, you can dig into that, but this is just a glimpse into that. And then it does give us a growth measure over time. So am I, as a teacher, growing Lindy a year within a year? She's a high cap student, and we know high cap students sometimes don't grow that full year. And so can I, as a teacher, stretch her brain and have her at least grow that year within a year, which is really important? Um, what iReady is not, it's not a judgment of students' ability. And sometimes we get confused by that. We say, oh, this student's behind, therefore they are. And we go into an ability judgment. iReady is not an ability um, judgment. It's um, not an indicator of stu- student failure. There's, it's not a pass fail. It's not whether they're failing on a grade level. It is a point in time where they are right now. Um, it's not a high-stakes accountability measure. In the past, um, high-stakes testing was a big thing nationwide. This is not a high-stakes piece. It's really a point in time. And then it's not a final determination for potential. So we wanna look at what are students' potential, um, and this is not um, a final determination on that. And so what does the data tell us? Um, it tells us that our students have not yet mastered all grade level content. And when you look at a student, um, and we're gonna say a third grade stu- grade student, and they are taking. This assessment at the beginning of third grade, if it shows them that they have not mastered that assessment yet, they shouldn't have. For typical students. If it shows that they're mastering that, that means they're already mastering the end of the year, third grade standards. So when you think about iReady, and if they're already in the green at the beginning of the year, they've already mastered it. So we've gotta look at them and say, how are we gonna grow them? We've gotta look at fourth grade standards, or we have to stretch their brains, so we're still growing in a year within a year. Um, most students are either going to be in the yellow or orange at the beginning of the year. For that grade level. It's when they're in the dark red, which we're gonna show, that it's a little more concerning. Because when they're in the dark red, it's gonna show that they're two grade levels behind, which would mean the current year they're on. But one additional year they're behind. And so we're gonna look at two pieces of data right now, just our beginning of the year data. Second grade through tenth grade and how our students performed on the beginning, and I'm gonna kind of describe those. So the first one's reading, and um, and I apologize how small that is. Um, but at the bottom of the screen is second grade, and you can see that most of our students in second grade. Are um, either in the, if you combine the yellow and the red, um, most of our students are in that. Sorry, yellow and orange um, level. Um, remembering that most of our students beginning of second grade should be at least in that yellow, if they, if they are on track. To be on grade level. Okay, if they're in the orange, that doesn't mean they're, they're behind, but they're missing some skills to get them um, to where they'll be at the. The end of the year at grade level. And so I already will identify some of those skills. Show the teachers what they might wanna work with, with this orange group to get them back to grade level. So yellows, grade level, they continue to do that by the end of the year, they'll be green. So then you look at second grade and you say, well, thirty-four percent or thirty-three percent are either in the green or dark green. They've already mastered end of the year, second grade. So what are we doing for those students as well? And iReady does the same thing, gives teachers strategies for students that have already mastered. Students that are on grade level and students that need to be taught that. As you start to look from sev- second grade, you start to see, beginning in third grade, we start to get the dark red. And the dark red means that we are two grade levels or more behind in that area. And so starting in third grade, about um, one in every ten of our students are at least two grade levels behind. In reading, um, in. Different areas. Um, and so those are where um, this diagnostic tool helps teachers to say. Do we need more phonemic awareness? Do we need more um, phonics? Do we need some um, other skills to get them to where they're comprehending? Because in third grade, that's where we start bridging to comprehension. As you start to go up in grades, you'll notice the dark red gets a little larger. And that's where we want to start looking at our guaranteed and viable curriculums that really help to support our students. That all of our teachers are teaching reading in the same manner with research-based um, curriculum. So you're going to start to see this data as we are highlighting a curriculum that's research-based. You're gonna see this data change over time. And that's with this diagnostic tool, um, our students take it more than, than once a year. They take it three times a year, so that we can see growth over time. Questions on?
What you're saying is that this chart at the beginning of the year will primarily have more red, orange and yellow. Goes through the year, it should shift to more green by the end of the year.
Absolutely. And, and the other thing is, as we start to target interventions, which the curriculum will have embedded in it. You'll start to see teachers taking small groups of having really specific um, ways that they're moving those, those students from. Orange to yellow or from yellow to green, um, as we go along. So you just, you'll start to see this shift. Pretty drastically, um, in, in students that are. More than a grade level behind, um, less drastically when in the green. You're not gonna see as many move from green to dark green, um, but you tend to see with targeted interventions, the. A more drastic change from the dark red to orange or from orange to yellow.
I would say like an observation also is like, it's interesting at middle school that. Like our areas where we have the most students at mid or above grade level is also like areas where we have significant, like. Behind grade level. It's interesting that those are the same year, which tells me that, that we're like, our gaps are getting bigger instead of smaller. And.
And if you remember, our WASF um, data showed that. We were, we were not making the gains in some of our populations. And then, then comparable school state to us. So, but we're gonna start to see that shift as we go. So before we shift to the next one, I just wanna preface it with, you're gonna see it uh, change as. Um, the elementary starts to use this curriculum and starts to implement and bring on um, interventions. Um, what we do not have in the elementary is a guaranteed and viable curriculum for math. And so the next slide's gonna show um, that piece changed a little bit. In, in elementary, but then we do have a guaranteed and viable curriculum in middle school. And so we're going to see in the middle school, some significant change as we start to look at um, that curriculum. As we go to middle school and math. So we'll look at that next. Go ahead.
I got a million questions, but I can say, well, um. This is the first time I've seen this information. I don't know if the administration has been looking at it previously or not, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of cautious to say, okay. This is really helpful, but you really need to look for two or three years to see what your trends are, not just at this moment in time. Unless you've got, I know, that's what I'm saying, is we don't have prior years, right?
Yeah, we don't in I ready because we didn't um assess all kids. But what's really nice about I ready is this is actually more usable more usable um for in now teaching. So yeah, so this is going to give that a a school a snapshot of. We have in second grade, about seventy percent of our students that we really need to work on grade level standards and below grade level standards to get them and continue them on the.
And that was my point is, yeah, you you can use this right now, yeah, very critical information. But you're also going to recognize that we didn't have it before, correct?
Boy, this is great. This is great.
I also do want to point out that um we took I ready tests in middle school and for those years that I took them, I always seemed to do better in the middle of the year than I did at the end of the year. Yeah, so it was just one of those things to look out for, because I know it wasn't just me, but kids do tend to be better in the middle.
Yeah, and some of that has to do with test fatigue, because at the end of the year, you you're taking the ESPA as well. And then you're taking this and you have the panorama. So a little bit of test fatigue goes into that. So um the biggest indicator of passing the ESPA is the January, the mid-year um assessment. So the mid-year assessment is what we always looked at to say, how many of our students are going to pass this this year? And it was pretty dead on um year after year. The end of the year data, just like you said, that we use for the beginning of the year to really start groups off day one instead of waiting for this data in October, November, we started our groupings from that data. And a lot of times it was accurate because you get a dip over the summer too. And so it it was helpful, but that that January, February data, that mid-year data point is the most um promising for for saying, how are we going to do as a district? So, thank you, yeah. Okay, so looking at math, math um is a little bit different. And um when you look at math in the state, math is different, right? Um, our students are not performing as well in math. Um, and you can see um at the second grade level, there's a larger group of students that are on track and on grade level at second grade. That yellow, remember, represents beginning of the year. And we shouldn't expect our beginning of the year second graders to be in the green unless they're already mastering and mastering, remember, means that they can do it every single time. Um, all of the standards in second grade, there are a lot of standards in second grade math. And so um this is where I love to see that most of our kids are on track um for grade level in second grade. We have about twenty-six percent of our students that are more than one year behind. Those are the ones that we want to be giving them core instructions, you still give them that core, and then they're getting some sort of what I call plus more. So intervention, um you know, numeracy flashcards in second grade, really working on automaticity and some of those things in addition to getting the daily lessons and not being taken out of those daily lessons. Um, as you start rolling up in the grades, you'll start to see that we do have more of our students in the green. That means they're already mastering those standards at the beginning of the year. So what are we doing to advance them? Um, and what are we doing to ensure that we're capturing some of our, I'm going to call red zone or the red students into that yellow, because you're starting to see that yellow shrink the opposite way. You want actually the yellow to start pushing towards that green.
I have a question about grade and because it doesn't seem to make sense. What happened to the rest of the data and why is there, why does it have seventy-eight percent there? Why is there no green?
So so because not all of our students um are taking the ass- the the state assessment or they've already passed it, those students are not in represented in this data. And so they did not take the I ready or they didn't, they've already passed it. So they removed that out, which I'm not sure. I don't know if Mr. Barrard has looked at why I ready doesn't represent it in the green, but they they take that part out in I ready. I haven't used I ready in tenth grade in the past. And so that's part of what I had to question for the administrators or something for you guys to look into of why it removes them once they're they're at or above grade level, so.
Does that mean they'll never actually be green in tenth grade or?
That's what I was curious about, because it wasn't represented in the data, anyone in that green zone. And there wasn't the full hundred percent, which was odd to me, so.
Are there trends where um I mean, people just flip off the testing? That students just, I mean, that's an awful large number of students below grade level. I mean, if they all took the test the same day and they all didn't want to do it, it might not have gotten very good a result.
So there's something to be said about prepping students for testing and the importance of testing. Um, I don't know the answer to particularly our students. I will say in my past as an administrator, we did um various um lessons leading up to our universal screener to let our students know how important it was um and why they were taking it and what that gave teachers in order to instruct them on. Um, and I don't know, and I'm not even sure our new administrators would know where we're at in that yet. But as we start to get trend data, we'll start to know whether they took it serious or not.
And is there a way that there might be a time when you would share that with the students to say, you know, um, you're going to be in this class of I'm just making that out number two because you're you're algebra one this year because your test score showed this. And they're going to say, well, I know that stuff, and then you need to.
That's that's.
I mean, it's a long, poor thing, I'm not saying you can fix this.
That's just part of that's part of why they prep them is and showing them why, you know, it's important. But yeah, there's there's something to be said about whether or not they took it serious.
Just good info to use.
So that was just a dabbling. You asked if, you know, we could see the results to kind of see um where we're at. I'll continue to dabble with our new platforms and what it's showing. Um, mainly our data dashboard that's going to incorporate panorama data as well as helping survey and some other pieces in the future.
And tell me again, like, because the school improvement plans were about I ready data. So was it the green, yellow, the greens and the yellow for their goals or was it the greens?
So what they are, they were asking to do was how what they perform at or above standard. So that would be.
Yellow and green?
There there's.
Or that's going to change.
Actually, yeah, the areas is going to actually have a score and whether they're at grade level or not. This is like a district view of it. So they they get actually, I'm going to say, a lot more information from this that's disaggregated. And they can look at actually who's on standard. So it reports it as um third grade first month, third grade second month, third grade third month. And whether a student is, if we're in the third month of third grade, are they in the third month of third grade as well? And so it compares them to the year and the month where this is district data. So it's just going to show overall where we at the very beginning of the year. And this is assuming that grade level zero months at that time.
Okay, yeah. You know, you have been explaining this since you arrived here, Kuzbel, about the kind of dating you want to have, the time you're going to use it. I just want to compliment anyone taking the time to share this with us. And when I'm looking at it and thinking, okay, this tells us where we are in a snapshot right now. I'm not going to go crazy about, I mean, there's a lot of stuff to look at here. But then if you take this back to your staff and they look at this and they can say, wait a minute, you know, we're way behind on this. It really helps direct you to the professional development necessary, or at least the acknowledgement that you there trouble with people taking tests or trouble with how we're measuring that progress. In four years, it's the first time I've seen this since I've been on the school board. I appreciate it very much.
What's really nice um is that in the live data, which this is a slideshow, so it's it's just a snapshot. But I could go on the very top one where it says fifty percent. I can click on that fifty percent. It's going to give me the list of kids that are in that dark red. And it's going to not only give me the list of kids that are in that dark red, but it's going to also show me what it is that they're lacking um and why they're behind. So it's going to say they're tenth graders, but they're lacking ninth grade skills here, eighth grade skills here, and here's what we need to do. And here might be the group that you want to put them in and what here's a lesson plan that you might want to support them with to to get them back up. So it's it's really nice because it it diagnoses, remember, it it's not an end-all, it's a diagnosis so that we can write a prescription on how we can give them.
And if you look at particular students and if you're seeing that somebody's got this deficiency, that their grades are Bs and As, they obviously didn't do death for.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, that's good, good stuff. So, yes, yeah.
Well, I was asking, as time goes on, uh, years, uh, can you then give a photograph of all a class from bit six to seven? Rather than.
Yeah.
You know, so that you can see.
You can see those.
Yes.
It does the cohort data, um, absolutely. And that's what we want to get to. We we don't care like how do eighth graders versus eighth graders next year? There's some things about that, but the best data we can get is how's this cohort progressing over time? And what are what might they be lacking? And sometimes that will go back to, wow, every time we look at cohort data in X grade, they're always missing this. What is what's missing in our curriculum there? And so sometimes it's a it's a port for what we might need to supplement in our curriculum to.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Move on to our board member reports. We'll start at the end. Director Sherman?
Hi, nothing to report. Have anything legislative report? I will say I did go to the uh elementary uh Veterans Day Assembly and it was uh well done. And I think the biggest takeaway was it was a hundred percent done by the student.
Absolutely.
It was totally student-led, student performed. Uh, they did have one guest speaker, but uh he was introduced by a student and uh everything was by students.
Part of why we got that Rice Award, I believe, is because of the student leadership. Yep, that's great. Thank you. Budget committee is going to continue having some conversations. Policy, we had a meeting, we'll be bringing more policies soon. I think it seems like it'll be a great time to start thinking about protocols before the twenty-one retreat.
Mm-hmm.
To us back into that. And I'll let Lindy talk about our robotics conference.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I'm just uh excited about all the financial information that I received this week. And I've got a lot of work to do, and I'll be getting back with my questions later. Um, again, just like I said, I mean, be complimentary about the um David, you just showed us, Shannon. I also need to be complimentary about some of the information Brian, the equal together. A lot of this is not stuff we've had in the whole four years I've been on the board. Um, it's not all fun to see, but I think it gives us information that we can start making better decisions and 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 go in the right direction. So I appreciate the work that you got there. I just got a little chance to time of it.
Thanks.
Um, so we are headed to the WASD conference. That's next week, this week. Next week. Thank you.
This week.
Next week. Um, we are going to leave the district office at ten forty-five?
Ten forty-five.
Ten forty-five. Um, and we will attempt to carpool, take less vehicles, because I think parking is quite expensive. And the training sessions will begin at two thirty on Thursday that day, and they will end at noon on Saturday. And just remember to be shared, prepared to share one or two takeaways from the conference at the next board meeting when we come back. We had a great walkthrough with Cooper Elementary School. Thank you so much for that. Uh, we learned more about the execution of their school improvement plans and had the opportunity to observe a classroom as we discussed with Mrs. Boyne, um, which had wonderful student-led instruction and peer-to-peer mentorship taking place. Um, the Cooper Elementary School team is working hard to implement their new reading curriculum, which we've heard a lot about, and building plans for the future to continue supporting emotional regulation and positive behavior. And I just wanted to say thank you for hosting us, that was great. Um, I also attended the Veterans Day Assembly with Mr. Merwin and loved the student-led portion. I did get slightly emotional, that's what I do, but I was just so proud of our students and grateful to be part of a school that practices service and gratitude for others. It's so important. Um, we had another facility task force sent meeting since our last board meeting. And the focus of the facility task force meeting was really on education around levies and bonds and also school district funds. And we have five different funds. I heard a lot of just even our own staff members just being very surprised and having a lot of questions about levy and bonds. And so I think it's just important to remember that it's not common knowledge what those things are. And it's really important to share and explain what those things are with our community. You both were able to attend and um it is a lot to learn and to understand. And so um we can, we can share that information. We do have a binder if anyone wants to look at it, um, we're happy to share. Levies for four years, used for education programs and operations, bonds for many years, like twenty, and those are for buildings. Do we get it right? Okay. Nice. Um, and then also just on behalf of our board, I just want to wish our staff and our students and our family an amazing Thanksgiving break. We're so grateful for each of you and um this amazing community who continues to show up and care so much for our students. So I hope you guys have a restful time. And that's all for my reports and we'll turn it over to our student board members if they have any reports.
Oh, good. Um, so as Director Ferrar said, we have the um robotics competition this Sunday. Anyone wants to come, you're more than welcome to. We'll be there from eight thirty to about four or five. So it's a long comp, but we're super excited. Our robot is pretty much ready to go. We just have a couple more things we need to tweak and fill out and our engineering portfolio that we need to get done. But other than that, we're really excited. So um then on behalf of Leo's Club, I want to thank you for um passing the fee.
Waiver.
Yeah, waiver. Yeah, um, it's really helpful to us because we can use the money, most of it goes back into the club anyway. So just getting rid of that financial barrier for new members is super helpful.
Uh, I'd also like to second what Lindy said about the Leo's Club. But moving further, um sports, all sports being over is certainly a shift for the school. And this is now my one period where I don't have sport because I just. Wish those people don't do it as I'm finding out. But uh, yeah, it's it's the time for pretty much everybody to begin having an engineer's performance.
I think I think most of us are just trying to make it break.
Well, maybe it's Thanksgiving before we think about anything else.
What's the favorite cross-country saying is your punishment is my sport?
Uh, my sport is yours worth punishment.
There you go. I love that one. Well, we're excited that you're on break, because we're going to take you to WASD conference. It's going to be so fun. And the very first session is all about student board reps. And so we are overjoyed to take you with us and for you to meet other students who are serving in your role and to continue to look at how this role could grow and um in different ways that you could potentially expand student voice within your position. And so we're excited to have you at conferences here.
I'm es- I'm especially excited about the first session because it's my former and board president, who is the parent of my school and my former employee, who are the presenters. So we're going to really pick their brains on how they work with our student board reps. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no pressure, no pressure, no pressure.
Yeah.
Thank you both. Um, we did not have any correspondence this month, correct? And we'll jump right into old business, which is approving second reading and adoption of policy sixty-two twenty, which is a bid or request for proposal requirements. We had the opportunity to discuss. We had the opportunity to discuss this at our last meeting and I think we also did this one at a workshop. This is an update of language, which includes changes around bid requirements. And this is a critical WASDA policy.
I moved to approve policy sixty-two twenty for second reading and adoption.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy sixty-two twenty for second reading and adoption. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take an advisory vote from our student reps.
Sounds good.
Two yays, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business tonight, there's only one item. And this is a legal requirement. And this is a motion to appoint the committees to prepare arguments advocating voters' approval and rejection of the district's EPNO and technology levy measures for the special election on February tenth, twenty-twenty-six and delegating the superintendent of the execution and submission to the committees to the county auditor, something about that, not quite right, but it's okay. It was.
I would move to do, I would make the motion as written. That's what I would do.
And I would second it as written.
Perfect. It's been moved and seconded to appoint the committees to prepare arguments advocating voters' approval rejection of the district's EPNO and technology levy measures for February tenth and delegating the superintendent of execution, execution and submission to the committees to the county auditor. Is there any discussion? Yes, it does. Taking advisory vote from our student reps.
There we go.
Two yays, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And that adjourns our meeting this evening. Thank you for joining us.